Call the meeting's order? Calling the meeting's order? Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I was waiting to see if somebody else came after that. Well, welcome, everybody. This afternoon, we have our work session. And as we stated earlier this year, as we released our district priorities, our work sessions this year will largely consist of updates around the different parts of our district priorities document. And so it's been a lot of fun to open up our two new schools this fall and fun to see kids occupying them. It's been interesting to look at how our population of students is kind of now being redistributed into those new schools, as well as the boundary changes and how all of that affects our overall picture of student enrollment and facilities moving forward. So last year, because we, you know, had a lot going on, our population went down just a little bit. We kind of went into a little different mode around some of our future planning. We need to pick that up again now and do kind of a refresh today of where the current facility plan stands, as well as start to take a look now into the future of what's next. We have some mission accomplished this fall, so now we need to begin planning and remember what we've got in the works for land acquisition and some of the other pieces. So Jeff Kreider is with us today, and he's gonna do both of those things, kind of a refresher course and an update, as well as begin helping us project forward. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Today, the CIP improvement plan update report. And some of this will be reviewed for a lot of you, but I'll kind of give you the status of where we're at. So this will be a status of all the projects, cost summary to date, so you'll see kind of where we're projecting, where we're at currently, and that's with the projects that have been bid or completed. Future approved CIP projects, and we'll talk about scheduling for those, land availability, and potential CIP projects, and those will be some of the future. So with that, we'll just get started with, these are the projects. This 10 projects, these have been bid and are currently either completed or still ongoing, and I'll kind of give you that as we go through that. I'm not gonna read every one of those, and we'll hit each one individually. So we'll start with Jefferson High School. We are in, we're operating, it looks pretty good, but our estimated completion is 2021. But I would guess by the time we get everything done, it will be probably towards the end of the year. A lot of punchless items, still things that we found that we need to purchase for equipment or something that was left out, so we continue to work on that. But with that, the overall project cost is about $84,100,000. So that's a projected, and I've kind of tried to project what change orders are out there and anything that still might yet to become. There might be a surprise to us, but I've tried to project that. And what that would do is bring us to about $6,562,000 under budget for that overall project. So feel pretty good about that. And that includes that about $720,000 of Terry Avenue reimbursement that will come from Southeast Tech and a portion of that Voice Property Group that owns the other portion. So we did both sides of the road, makes it a lot easier, and we have an agreement with that. Next one has been rifle, same kind of thing. We're up and running, we still have punch lists to do. Everything is in place. We'll try to get that one done before the end of this fiscal year, and the total project cost there is about $39,66,000. Now, there's a surprise that is just coming up, but I have that included in that number is we had that emergency radio system. I think Cynthia knows all about that. We did a evaluation and it all tested good. And now the police came in there and it's not tested good, so they're doing that. So there was another test last week. And so I haven't heard what we're gonna end up having to do, but my gut feeling is we're gonna probably have to put some type of expansion for that emergency radio. And I've included dollars into that number for that, so when you see that. So when you look at this project, we're about $3,280,000 under budget. And that includes reimbursement from the church, adjacent church, for $380,000, plus or minus. That final number hasn't been, it's pretty close to that, for Faith Avenue construction. And that includes also, this was the project that we balance the inflation for the rest of the project on, so that includes that. So that is there as well. The Memorial, that's the music addition. That was roughly $980,000, and that was about $300,000 under budget. And that was completed in 2019. And Robert Frost, if you look at these, I should probably told you that there's a bond number, then there's a capital number of items that we've rolled into that. What we try to do is make some efficiencies and budget some of the needed things that were listed in the, when we did that CIP projects, and listed those in blue, if you remember, and we tried to roll some of those in when we did these projects. So there's combination of capital and bond money into these projects. So if somebody goes back to look at what those dollars are, they don't quite match, that's the reason for that. But the end of the day, it's the project total includes both of those. And then when I get done with those projects, you'll see what the bond number is and what we're. So this project was about $2,347,000, about $72,000 under budget. And that was completed in 2020. Then you have Laura Wilder. That was that new elevator, playground, bathrooms, offices, and tutor rooms, those sort of things. And that project came in at $1,829,607. And that's, it was about $200,000 over budget. Now, these all numbers include furnishings, everything that was associated with this. Horseman, if you remember, this one has a little uniqueness to it. But this was a security entrance, ADA staff restrooms, renovated existing administration area and some other, and that new parking lot. This was completed in 2020, and we did some renovations of the restrooms, et cetera, with the capital. This project was almost $2,500,000 and about $37,000 over budget. But you remember, we deferred all the classroom addition with that. So we rolled over the classroom addition of $2,569,000 for that. And we've also inflated that so the inflation numbers were hitting in the right time. So that's a number that got moved over to that with the additional inflation. And that's sitting there for 2024, '25. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get there, or move forward with future projects. Lincoln High School, this is currently underway. We hope to be done in '21. This is expanding the athletic training area, providing exterior restrooms and updating existing restrooms. Kind of combining, we took the old restroom out and kind of been doing a shared restroom there. And then we did some projects under the capital outlay. This project was $1,432,000 and currently about $23,800 under budget. Now, this project isn't complete, unfortunately, but I think we're starting to see what's gonna happen. And I'm just so thankful that we have the high school done and the middle school done with what's happening in the construction area right now. This is sitting there, and we can't finish it until the roof insulation gets there. And I can't do the ceramic tile in those bathrooms until I get a roof on it. And that's not scheduled to be here till second week of September. But every project is starting to see these kind of things happen, in delays, and, you know. I say we're just trying to manage, not get ahead of ourselves, where getting problematic for kids and how we're operating schools. So we have this isolated, we're able to operate the whole school. And I'll give you an example at Cleveland Elementary as well, when we get there. But so we're trying to really manage how we can continually operate without getting impacted by this construction. So logistically, it's a nightmare, and it seems to be getting worse than better. So hopefully, as we move forward, we won't see that. But inflation and everything else will be an impact. Cleveland Elementary, constructing the new gym and associated rooms, new kindergarten classroom, two music rooms, multipurpose, and Miss Wayness Capital Outway, replacing all the windows. And we're kind of right in the middle of this one. This project is slated to be completed in '22. And our goal is to move into the new gymnasium over Christmas. So, and we're on track for that, I think it's looking good. There's a few things that we probably didn't get done. They were planning to do the chiller. And knowing what we had to do at Horseman and the chiller delays, and I said, "We're not tearing the old chiller out until the new one shows up." So the new chiller is not gonna be here till mid-September, late September. So we're operating on the old chiller, which is okay. And then this winter, we'll put the new chiller in. So we're still managing, we're trying to manage, that's another one of those management, don't get ahead of yourself. We did move forward with the boilers, and they're being worked on right now. They're pretty much in place. So that project's on schedule, and things still are happening. And we did find out just yesterday that we may not have our one-inch lines for the basketball court, so we'll try to figure out how we're gonna deal with that. But that's just one of those things. But this project, we had budgeted, right now it's at $7,000,000, almost $200,000 for the budget then. And that's projecting some change orders that will come through. And we're about $535,000 under budget for that. So you might see someone, when we do our walkthroughs, some change orders come through that will try to pick that up under that budget number. So like, I know there's some concrete and some receiving areas that I could save some on the capital.
I just had a brief question of my own about this, he said, "Okay, fine, let's know." Did this, how much of a disruption was this to traffic flow and things right around Cleveland as we got the year started?
Oh, the traffic flow around Cleveland is exactly the way it.
Okay, so it didn't.
Has been. I mean, they were tight because we had to do a sewer tie-in, we got that all complete. So it should be all right, other than maybe contractors parking around the site. But we kept the old parking lot intact, and so we should be all right. And next summer, the playground will be reconstructed and a new parking lot and drop-off area will be integrated. That's why it's gonna go through next year. And we haven't worked out exactly, the dominoes that will happen inside once the gym opens up. We'll work with the admin team over there, decide if we're gonna keep the multipurpose room active and then do the gym first, or how that's gonna work. Back when Mitch was there, the idea was that we were going to feed out of the multipurpose room and then do the gym and kind of flip-flop those. Because the old multipurpose is gonna be the new music area. So there's a lot of dominoes that'll happen, but we'll just sequence that, and we'll review that before we embark on that with the building renovation station. So Jane Adams, we've constructed two music classrooms. We moved, if you remember from the original schedule, we moved the playground and the parking lot project up because we obtained those properties. And so we've moved that forward. And this again, there's been some delays in piping and so forth. That's created some slowness on the playground and parking lot. But everything inside the building is complete, with the exception of toilet partitions. And we have painted plywood toilet partitions in place. You can't hardly tell when you walk through them, but that's one of those things that there's been delays. Even on Cleveland, there's been some delays, but we have enough free time to get those in the process. So some of these smaller summer projects are the ones that really become tight, and some of the delays create some nightmare for us. But we put plywood partitions so they operate just like they would. We got the whole sprinkler system in, and fire lime, new fire lime system in, and all the plumbing in the tunnels. So we're gonna finish up with the playground and the parking lot, hopefully in the next month. So it could extend, the parking lot could extend a little bit, but they're actually using the playground now with some temporary fencing. They got the playgrounds painted. But one thing, the play structure doesn't arrive till about mid-September. So, and that's all our playgrounds that we did this last year. So they're all been delayed, and right now, they're on track for mid-September. And this project came in at $2,950,000. That's what's projected right now, under, that's $54,000 under budget. Now, that includes buying the houses and those sort of things. And we did, we did work with Habitat, or Sioux Falls Housing, and they moved that house for us. So, and we're doing the same thing with Whittier Neighborhood. If we buy a home, we're gonna see what their interest is. And they were interested in only one of the two houses that they thought was viable for them. Okay, then Instructional Planning Center, that's, you see that under construction now, the lobby. Then we've got exterior storage and community education storage area as part of the capital. This project's about $644,000 projected and about $1,000 under budget. So we know that might be with some of the ceramic that we're gonna have to do, it might go over a little bit. I think that's the last one of the bid project. So cost summary of awarded and completed projects to date. There's about $149,000, or $149,000,278,000 of projects on the bond, about $6.8 million in the capital of the project. And the final bid with estimated cost of all those, with the projections that were on the sheets that you saw, about $145,540. about $145,540 that have been, that we're projecting to come in. So right now, we're looking at budget to actuals about $10,000, $10,500,000 under budget.
And, um, so looking at that, since, is it, would you say it's an even percentage distributed between the bid and bond for those, that under-budget number?
Yeah, right now, it's, we kept, we, we took the capital and spent most of that. And assumed those were better numbers.
As I was hoping, so the bond we can keep.
Yeah, so the bond had, right now, the bond is better.
It's getting to savings. Okay, thank you.
So when you look at percentages, we get, we're about 78.57% of the bond bid and underway or completed. And then, right now, we're at about 6.79% under budget. Now, how that inflation, now if you look, what we did with inflation with these projects, you can see, that'll show up. But when we did the, essentially, we started at 3% inflation, then went to four in the mid-years, then we went to five on the, the couple of years out. Because those are the ones you don't want. Now, I don't know if five's going to cover those numbers as we move forward. But as you, as you do with some of these long five, you know, eight-year projects, you kind of really do well, then you kind of peek over. So, you know, with what's going on with the steel and some of the wood and some of that, it'll be interesting to see with some of these numbers. Yeah, and we can get it done. So right now, we're doing great and so forth, so. Future approved CIP projects, JFK, I won't go through these, we'll hit each one of these individually. But we got about seven more projects and then the Forest Man is going. So JFK are, we're planning on, we've met with the, met with them last spring and did all the preliminary design work last spring with the buildings. And they're working on constructing documents. And this one has a new gymnasium and associated rooms, converting the existing gym into the multipurpose and kitchen area. And convert the multipurpose into a general music area and then construct a new parking lot. We're also working on this one with the city. They're doing a, a whole West Mesa development drainage system. And they're kind of in a three-year cycle with that. So we've had several meetings with them and how this can work. And they may be coming towards us to do some type of retention on-site. And then we can get some of the, the dirt from that for a parking lot and work, work together with them. We always try to work with them, but this was before, this one even was even started planning. So this project is slated for about $5,770,000. And that's with the identified capital outlay project. And that's include, that, the capital outlay projects are building permanent walls and updating ceiling and those sort of things. They've been wanting that for a long time. And before we move for the monitors, it makes sense to do it and then we'll get those done at the same time. So our goal is to bid this one probably '21, '22, probably, I'd, I like to do it November, December, so get this one done. We've had the public hearing on this project last year, so this is ready to go for bids. Okay, Roosevelt High School, Roosevelt and Washington are very similar, so there's not a lot of difference. But we've also met with them last year, have the schematic design done, probably almost through design development. And this project will provide additional multipurpose gym storage, additional PE coach's office and expand training room, expand weight, weight room similar to Lincoln and Jefferson, and provide an exterior restroom for security. And provide a soccer and tennis, or soccer only here, because tennis is up on the, on the park site. Then we're going to update the bleachers in the gymnasium, refinish the gym floor at the same time, air-condition the weight room, and then do some other miscellaneous things that are probably not as critical. But this, this project is slated for about $3,200,000. And Washington is virtually the same with the exception that they have a tennis and soccer storage area. They have tennis and soccer on-site. This one's $331,000, $3,341,000. And we'll bid these together as two bidders.
And then when do you anticipate or hope that this work will be completed, like summer of '22 or?
Summer into fall of '22. So we're going to have to work through that. Right now, we wouldn't even have steel if we bid it in time to complete it. So we're going to have to work closely with the contractors on how we can get these up down first. But there's a couple here that the entrances, we're going to improve the entrances, the back weight room and gym space in a, for corridors. So you can access that athletic area.
I know, I think I ask you this every time you give this update. And I was at Washington last night watching people struggle up the bleachers. Yes, and so it makes me very nervous. So I, I'm hoping that that's one of the things that we don't have to wait for materials on, that we can, I know I'm living-
Well, I would love to have this done next summer. It all depends if I can get delivery in the bleachers, so. Some of those, we don't have any, any control.
I know. I just had some people ask me last night and like, "You know what? I think we're talking about that tomorrow, so I'm going to ask." Yeah, no, I totally agree.
More likely what we'll do is we'll make sure the gym floor gets done. And then if it's delayed, you know, so much, we'll try to get them in as soon as possible. Maybe we can hit before basketball season. Yeah, it's too early to tell.
I'm glad, I'm glad there's a timeline. I feel like, you know, I probably have asked about this three times. That means that like for the last three years, it's been on the, and I know it's out there. It's just there's a, there's a process and a timeline for everything, so I'm just glad that it feels like it's getting closer.
Yep, it's, it's, it's real close. And the, the design of this is quite far along, so we can get ready. We may have the public hearing this fall earlier than normal in the past, maybe after we get done with the walkthroughs, so we'll see what that is. So we don't miss out something. I guess we can always have two public hearings, it's not that critical though. I think it's more critical to get these bid in a timely, consider what's going on. So then Hayward, this is construct new locker rooms, adds additional storage to, I mean, big community center gym. Then convert the existing locker area into multipurpose room storage. And this one, construct permanent walls and classrooms just like JFK and level of pit area. It's similar to what we've done at, at John Harris, Annie Sullivan, and makes it more usable and some miscellaneous other things. So this one's slated for '21, '22. I'm debating whether we should hold off on this one for one year, depending on how those other bids come in to see. Because it'll be identical to the, the sheetrock and studs and walls and marker boards and some of those things, so. Then we have central services. There's some changes, what's in red are possible changes. That's Bond, renovates existing screening evaluation area, constructs training meeting rooms, add security entrance and expand vehicle storage and equipment garages to house existing equipment. This also renovates some of the existing vehicle area that were relocated into the vehicle storage. So purchasing has a loading area that they, they can bring their stuff closer, their risers and those sort of things that are right by the truck. So they don't have to move them so much, give them some more space for storage as well. And we're looking at potentially working with food service and replacing boilers to that whole complex. That hasn't been budgeted, but it'll probably be on the next budget cycle that we'll see. So it's, it's about time for those. And then possible changes to this is eliminate the early childhood addition and renovate the IT/OS department and print shop area. So take the dollars that we have for this addition, because we're, you'll see what we're thinking about for them in the future's life. And, and do an IT and OS, the way it probably should be set up, piece move. Look at that as holistic and we probably should be able to do that within that current budget that we have. And that budget, overall budget is $3 million, right at $3.5 million. Okay, and then we have Northwest Elementary School. The initial is try to get it done by 2024. And there's potential to delay that to 2025, and Todd will talk a little bit about that. This would be a four-section school. And the, the original estimates were based on a modified plan we used of either Susan B. or sort of my air or a combination of both. With that, we're still at a point where we could do a brand-new school if we want to. We just have to adjust the, the budget accordingly. And then the street construction, if we change venues, there's a potential to look at, if we have additional land, because we're looking at some property to the west that's more towards where all the kids are now. But we'd have to look at the budget for that, for, for utilities and roads. I know the city is on board to get the utilities to those site, that site if we, if we so choose. And so there's, there'd probably need to be a little bit adjustment to look at that, to see how much is set for the utilities and roads. And for that other site, the, the parks has said that they would want to be a part of that, so. We'll look at the, those sites when we go through that. But then, right now, we have $21,510,000 in there. Then if we did delay that, we'd have to adjust for inflation. We'll know what some of that construction cost is when we do Washington and Roosevelt, see if we can get additional examples that we can take away at that point. So, next slide kind of talks about elementary projections. I'll just turn that to Todd, that we put that in. So you can kind of see what some of the projections might be, impact of that.
So when we plan this, we had-
I'm going to pause you just really quick. Questions about, maybe just the building projects before we kind of move into this next part? Okay.
So when we plan this, we had a five-year projection that showed the task force and the board and everybody. And so first couple of years, we're kind of on track. We're actually 129 ahead of our projected pace. This is for elementary. And last year, obviously, COVID hit, it had a more profound effect on elementary than it did on the other levels. So we were off 300, we weren't down 351, we were off 351 from the projection. Didn't know this year if we'd, we'd have an immediate bounce back or a bounce back to our trend or what, you know, that the prior trend. And so this is just the first day of school, so, you know, in 2022, we're comparing apples to oranges a little bit. But we're 496 down off the projection and we're 13 off the number. Now, when you get to, sometimes some of those kids show up, you know, with the first week of school, then some come back after Labor Day. So when we get to the fall enrollment, well, count, we, we might actually be up, but we're probably not going to be anywhere near. Or we're not going to, we're not going to make up that difference of 496 on where we had projected back in 2018. So then talking about what we should do, well, we should wait for the official fall enrollment and then do a new five-year projection. And then kind of come back to the board and see what you want to do about whether we go for 2024 like we had planned or 2025.
I think that's prudent because we obviously were seeing other things affecting our enrollment. And it might be time we need to re, look at how we're projecting our enrollments as well. Because obviously, that projected number is probably needs to be adjusted as well going forward for next year, since we're not even at those numbers now, so.
Yeah, so I just should clarify in case I wasn't clear. This was the projection as of 2018 going outward. It has, we've changed and it's lowered, but I just wanted to show you, when we made the decision on the elementary school, we were looking at a, an enrollment of 11,676 for elementary. Right now, first day of school, apples to oranges, we're at 11,100. But our projection changes each year based on what we know from prior. But this is what it was way, you know, three years ago.
Okay, then I have Forest Man, I think this is the last project listed. This is the deferred, you know, construct a new addition with six classrooms, restrooms, meeting rooms. I think we just need to evaluate as we get closer to the planning portion and to see if that's needed or not. It was delayed because their, their numbers went down, so we'll just have to look at it as we get closer. The schematic design is done. We did the schematic design with the original project, we just kind of held off. So the boilers, chillers and all that's in place for this. So we, we did move forward and knew and planned for it. So it's just a matter of will we move forward or will we need to, so.
And I think it's good to keep it in our pocket because we don't know what the after-effects of behavioral and so forth. We might see more students having to replace the Forest Man than we have.
So there's roughly $2.6 million sitting there for this project in the bond. All right, so we'll talk a little bit about the land that we have. You'll see some maps coming up, so I'll, we'll explain where they're at if you have any questions. But new elementary sites, options, we have the Northwest by George McGovern. And there's a potential school park site between 26th and 22nd Street, west of Ellis Road. And then we also own Lincoln Elementary Site. And I guess I put, we put some options down because we've been getting approached by several people about what that is. You know, an idea is to retain it for future projects, if we have something that, an early childhood center or whatnot. There's potential for affordable housing. That's kind of what the original thought was when we were moving towards Whittier. You know, or dispose of the site to potential organizations or developers. Then we have the Whittier Site that were, that's part of the bond. I think there's a four-and-a-half million dollars to purchase properties over there. That's for their, our future replacement facility. We currently own six lots of the potential 41 lots. And we'd like to reissue the RFP for real estate services, so we can stay on top of that in September. We did that once, they didn't really come in very well. And we're hoping that maybe we can revisit that. So with that, the circle area is the Northwest Elementary Site. As you can see, George McGovern, and I was amazed that this area actually had, you can see Jefferson. And now that field between those have started developing and they're going to have commercial, residential. And on the other side, they're going to develop that parcel that, if you see where the fire, I don't know, I don't have a pointer there. But just to the right of the circle, Valley, that's Valley View Road. And there's a phase two of that development that I've seen that's going to be residential and apartments and so forth. So there's, there's some plans to start putting some houses there.
Isn't there also a park site there as well?
Yes, it's a, it's just to the left of the circle. That's a park site. That really hasn't been, it's just been kind of gradually mowed and put seed.
Nothing there, but they all, that's what it's being held for.
Yes. Is it? Right there. Oh, I learn something every day. There, and then Valley View Road is here, and this is the area that probably phase two of this development. And they're also developing this in the corner over here. So that's that one. The one that potentially we're looking at is, this is the Lennox Land that we took in. And there's a portion, a nice portion, kind of like we did in Discovery where it's, we could potentially purchase something with the parks that would go between 22nd and 26th. Haven't officially worked through all the logistics, but the city, we're doing a study now on how to get this all developed. The developer owns most of this property and wants to open it up. So there's going to be a lot of growth there, I believe. So there's gonna be a lot of growth there, I believe. And if you look at Discovery and Oscar, it's almost, it's about identical distances between Discovery and uh, and Oscar. And this is, uh, this is. PLS Real is right there. So that's a potential site. For a future. I say potentials, do we have any? Got it all. And this is a kind of the layout of the Whittier neighborhood. And the colored ones are the ones we own. The the green. Are ones we've demolished and are just vacant lots now. And the colored ones are. Are either, this is the only one that's not. We just finished a little bit of roof work on that and it's out for getting. And these two are, the blue two are. And as you can see, the new building would sit right through here and we convert this into parking and this could be extra. Open that we we get rid of or look at when we develop this. And then we would close these street, these streets off and this would be a. Connection to the football field. So you don't have to go down a neighborhood or cross streets or anything to.
That exists in football field now.
Yeah, the football field exists.
Couple of rocks in there.
It's a, yeah. The court side is pretty close to the top and as you go right here, you can see court side out there, so. Okay. So then we've also put some potential CIP projects, future. Some of these might not be so future. Uh, the old New Tech High School Site. Um, options are professional development center. And we're actually moving forward with that. We can do that without doing anything over there, just setting up and operating it. Um, early child screening and evaluation, uh, move those. Move that department over to this site. Uh, have a meeting tomorrow with them again to walk through that. And they could be, they have full presence. They could be the manager of that building so they can queue people in, screen people and those sort of things. And it, I think it really works well and allows um, a lot of things to happen there. And then it also has space if it becomes a early to childhood. Like we could put three classrooms in there in some science rooms that are like adjacent to it. So there's a lot of options there. It's not on the docket right now, but maybe moving the screening and eval and the birth of three that are in central services. Open up that space in central service.
So they'd all move there.
Yeah, that group would move over there. I guess we toured them through and good reception from them. They really thought that was a great option.
May interject us a little bit. What we looked at was, you know, there were some possibilities for that new tech site that didn't materialize with. Um, some other organizations and so we looked at it and said, what, what can we use this site for? We own it. It's here. What makes sense to put out here? And one of the things that we continue to have a need for is just more professional learning space. And this place is full to overflowing, particularly at the beginning of the year, but really throughout the year. And we have. You know, hundreds of subs coming in to get trained at the same time you're trying to onboard new teachers and at the same time you're trying to do a regular training that you have planned. Or we have nurses and we have school sites. All those larger groups and the larger our district gets, the more people we have. And so some of the things that have worked well over the last, you know, hundred and fifty years, as we say this year, just aren't, we don't have the capacity in the same way. And so we looked at that space and said, what can we do out here for a little to no cost to kind of make the space available? And then what might else we put out here? And so the things that Jeff was just listing are things that could go easily out there. We're already looking at doing the professional learning and the. The intake for the early childhood screening and other things are very conducive out there. And when we looked at the um, early childhood aspect of it, we have some green space to the north. If you go out those doors and just kind of to the side there, the parking is in good shape for the things that we're looking at. We didn't have to add parking space. And then there's some nice collaborative pieces that can still come along with STC. And if we had to undo any of this, it wouldn't be any big major renovation that we, you know, spent money. Unwisely that we would have to then pull things out of there. So that's what we're trying to do is look at how can we use that space well.
Um, I think my only concern is just the, we've already got Scarborough Center out at Southeast Tech. So they provide daycare and preschool and so wouldn't want to take anything.
Right, and that's a collaborative piece that we've talked about. Either we just add more capacity and we're in addition to. Or with um, some of our career pathways, students with, you know, early childhood opportunities, any of that, we would certainly collaborate with them. But we would try and just add value to what's out there and not be in competition. So that's a good point.
And my other concern would be transportation, um, because it's further out of the community, you know, first to the home, they go to the home. So I'm not worried as much about those clients, but um, the early childhood screening and eval.
They have bus rates right.
That's what I thought. So that, and that does just go through the the uh, the time. So it should work with them too.
Yeah, we talked about that in terms of accessibility and in some ways it's better because it's right off the interstate there and, you know, zipping around instead of having to go in and through. But we did talk about that and that's certainly a consideration for anything that would be permanently located out there is what's the accessibility? And we looked at, you know, another early childhood facility earlier last year and that was one of the things. It was just so far north that it didn't seem feasible. At least this is kind of co-located with some other things. If you're a parent and you're, you know, familiar with STC or you're maybe even doing programming out there. It's just a little bit more of a hub for learning than, you know, just kind of off by itself in nowhere land, but definitely something we need to think about.
Yeah, as far as those classes, I threw that in because there's space there. If we ever needed it because of like a Hayward, it's all the crowded. There's an opportunity there. Nothing in any budget to do that. So the other ones, the Learning Together Center and I'm not, and then we just, um, just talked about them. Just yesterday is a temporary house for Starbase that they're doing some renovations out there. They were at Renberg and. Their numbers are pointing that they're gonna be crowded.
Have to add a classroom.
Cards that this could be an opportunity for them. And uh, we have plenty of space then they can move in right to classrooms that exist. We have furniture there. And uh, I think Teresa has toured them.
Yeah, we toured yesterday with uh, Starbase and yeah, they appreciated the site.
As a temporary.
Right, and the National Guard being there.
Yeah, and Learning Together Center is just a takeoff on our district priorities and we think about the span of learning that may take place out there. It just seems like that might be a good moniker. So if we want to make that official or not, but that's kind of how we're envisioning it. It's just a, a learning center type moniker to it.
So I think it's gonna be a pretty nice facility and we could do almost everything here without any renovations. Maybe a little bit electrical, but we'll do those in-house and we could try to do that pretty effectively. Okay, the next one is a potential early childhood center and this is really needs some studying. Whether we do a central, central facility somewhere or do a, a, you know, combination, school base, then smaller center. So there's a little work to do, but we've listed it there. Dr. Stevens, if you want, do you have anything to expand on?
No, I, you know, I think that's something as we, you know, move through this year, that's something that we want to continue to prioritize. We didn't put that in as a district priority, just knowing there were other things that really need to be in front of that. But um, I think the need is there. We know the need is there community wide for childcare. And so if that's something that also presents itself now that we maybe have a different facility option, I think we can just see if that's something that we want to go ahead with. But it's, that's a pretty big collaborative project as well because we have um, a lot of other possibilities where we could. Either have a partner that exists in the community, move into one of our schools if there's room or, you know, adding it in that school site. As opposed to a standalone or maybe it's a standalone, but we want it to be bigger. So I think there's just a lot of questions that we would need to ask about where we want to go with that and how.
Okay, then uh, Whittier Middle School Replacement, that's uh, in the future and just put it out there that uh. It'll probably be a three year process to, it'll be a brand new school. It's not gonna be a, a plan reused that we can get going quickly. So we want that to fit that site and be designed for that site. Um, so it just takes a little longer to make sure everybody has their input and uh, meet the standards of the district, but to have their input that.
I've got one more for you. We talked years ago for a long time about the clothing, when you put in the budget, coming towards the media area, but those are like in Washington. The other two schools from that work through the media from the east. So we'll have to do that. We talked about it five, six years.
Yeah.
I thought we had it done. Well, we were going to do it, but something to think about. I don't know what the cost would be.
I would have to look back, but we did estimate it and we do have some drawings of it because it's come back about twice now. Yeah, the other ones are actually, that media is actually in the, in the gym that they access through the gym. Okay, then uh, high schools, uh, probably want a discussion on field turf and lighting at Lincoln, Roosevelt and Washington. The standard has been changed and uh, we just need to probably get that on schedule to, to make them comparable. There's a lot of clamoring in the buildings and in the community about getting that accomplished sooner than later. And you probably have a.
I'd really do, that would be nice. I mean, I don't think we have to do it. I'm sure people make a lot of noise about it, but. Don't you drink something? I would like to see him get a nice turf field that they have, obviously.
I think, you know, whenever we have that standard that's put in place at, at a new facility, everybody is looking to say, what does that mean for? What does that mean for our existing facilities? And this is also directly connected in our district priorities about kids being involved in activities. And we want those activities to all have a high standard of a performance area or practice area. So, you know, I think this is something that's pretty standard. Um, we've had Howard Wood, of course, in our district, which is able to accommodate. Events that are competitive, um, but we also have a lot of things that lead up to those competitive events and we've added teams and, and more kids. And all of that just plays into what does that standard become then and can we get that done? And so I think that's something and, and Mark, when you mentioned a couple of those, maybe other things that have been on the list, that might be where those things all fit together. Is what brings us up to that new standard for where we can accommodate that? And of course, there's some areas where we won't be able to make things look all of the same and, and don't need to. But this is an area that's probably something that we need to get done.
What would that cost?
Oh, probably about two million a site. Maybe a little longer than that. That's kind of, since we, we'd have to evaluate the existing drainage and how much we can use of that. Because each school has a, a pretty good perimeter drainage system that we could drive into and that, that saves some dollars.
Does it save dollars? Most of the maintenance, water, whatever?
Um, the maintenance will be a wash. Um, you won't have to water it, but you, you won't have to mow it, but you have to groom it, you know, have to pull it. So, yeah, the, the maintenance, I always say is somewhat of a wash when you do that. When we, when we took from Howard Wood, you can save some time though. You don't have to mark field. You don't have to stripe fields, those sort of things. And you don't have to watch the band plot in the mud when it, you're out there on a rain, you know, that, when it just raining. Those things are what really improves, you know, the, the school and the football, they can play on. You know, I was shocked when I heard that they don't play any games at Lincoln High School because of the, the condition of the turf and, you know, about midseason, it gets to be terrible. Because I was trying to coordinate when we're gonna, we updated the scoreboard and go, oh, don't worry about it. We don't have any games here. You know, that's when I go, wow, you know, it kind of tells you what the condition of that field is.
And I, and I, I think I'm correct and correct me if I'm wrong, but it also opens up some middle level competitive capacity. If we have the ability for our middle schools to play at a high school location.
Yeah, I mean, you can virtually use it. And it's gonna be about a, a fifteen year lifecycle. But the majority of it is the drainage system, the gravel, the digging out. Uh, I think Howard Wood, when we did it, was about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars replaced. You know, when we did that last.
Fifteen years later.
So. That is it. So, open for any questions or?
Yeah, open up for public input. We have one person signed up, Chad Bishop.
My name is Chad Bishop. I live at seven four zero five South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. What could I possibly have to say about this? Kitchens. I wanted to let you know that Gay Anderson and Morgan Van Der Zee were very generous with their time this Monday morning and we had a great exchange about the school nutrition um, system. It was timely discussion because I learned something related to your meeting here today. Gay informed me that to the best of her knowledge, not one elementary school in Sioux Falls has a full service kitchen. How many facilities do and why does this matter? This will limit our options when it comes to making sure we are serving our kids the most nutrient dense food possible that they will eat. It will continue to favor the use of what can be called highly processed food in the district. I am here today to advocate that you actively engage your nutritional staff in these efforts as Keystone stakeholders. So that you can design and retrofit our schools for the vision I think we share. Perhaps kitchens can be planned now and built, or planned and built now, but use this flex space until the time comes. I understand some of the requirements that are impacted with respect to ventilation and fire protection, but it should be considered at this point. So why is this important? Our experience during the pandemic should have brought a few things into crystal clear focus. Our collective public health and economic risk were both primarily a function of chronic disease in our country. Other than age, our biggest risk factors for adverse outcomes were clinical obesity and diabetes. Economically, we can measure part of the impact as we had to monetize four point one trillion to keep the lights on last year. As a side note, as monetary velocity picks up, it's reasonable to bump that inflation estimate you cited. We're either to start making strategic investments into this key factor or we will continue to pay. School nutrition is a non-trivial piece of this problem. You serve thousands of kids every day in the district. As quantified by the CDC, our total public and private healthcare spend was three point eight trillion prior to the pandemic. The CDC says ninety percent of that is due to chronic disease. At the top of the list, obesity and diabetes. I will continue to argue that this is a function of a poor nutrition. We're overfed and undernourished. Think of the thousands of kids you can impact for the life, for life by creating the country's best school nutrition program. I believe this to be a critical component in your meeting, your stated goals of making the Sioux Falls School District the best district in the country. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration in this matter. Chad.
Any questions for Todd, Jeff or Dr. Saban on the facilities update?
No, I just think it's always exciting to hear the changes and the, the growth that we're experiencing and um. At all levels, really, we're talking about early childhood, we're talking about um, all of that high school. And so again, just like our bond really impacts all of those different um, levels and all the different schools across our city. So do all of our future projects that we're looking at too. And um, I think some of those ideas for New Tech are really interesting, um, given that kind of educational hub that it has become out there. It's a great partnership with the people who are already out there, the organizations and um, it might be easier for some people to get to. Like you said, the parking is great. It's easy to walk up to the building. Um, it is here too, but as people are coming and going continuously from this building, um, you're still right in saying, let's move some of those bigger events or teachers. Um, and showcase some of our other buildings too. So um, some exciting things. You think about all the things that we've accomplished this year. With the projects and then you think, okay, here comes, you know, not necessarily round two, but round ten or whatever it is, but it's just, it's continual. And I think that speaks a lot for um, our district and our, our ability and our desire to keep our facilities in top notch. Um, very competitive and very um, reliable facilities for our community to depend on. Knowing that no matter where you live in Sioux Falls, the school that you send your child to is going to be a great facility that's safe and up to date and um. that's safe and up-to-date and, and recently renovated in some way, whether it's just the classroom or the bathroom or the outside or the security in the office. But we're looking at every single school regardless of its location. So lots of good things, lots of work.
Well, thank you to Jeff and Todd and actually for all this information. I know it takes a while to compile all this and update all of us as well as the community on what's going on with our buildings and so forth. I, I look at, you know, our enrollment numbers and that does give me pause when looking to the future, what we do. But it's, part of me thinks we also could still maybe develop an, because I do feel when we, our elementaries are so big, a lot of those elementaries lose that community feel to them. So I'm not saying we should do this, I'm just saying it'd be nice to, part of that study, whether we're not, we're going to do it is, should we also look at making it a little smaller, making it in that neighborhood? And that would also alleviate some of those other schools up in that area, whether it's Osterhauer or JFK or our pedigree, you know, just all that northwest side, those large schools. And, and those are just some thoughts, just, I'm just seeing this all today, so this is just off the top of my head. But those are some things I'd like to be studying as we go forward on that. I also think our city, our state, has the highest working, uh, highest percentage, I believe, of working moms in the country. And I, I think of by adding this early childhood, by after-school programming and all that, I think that really would help make us a more possibility option for some parents who might be using private schools that have aftercare right there that are not full or even preschools that have aftercare that are not full as well. So I think we always keep, need to be looking and studying these things so that we make sure we're able to serve our community and what our families need in our, our district right now. So I think all of these things are heading that way. And same with wherever that elementary school does end up, is there going to be other opportunities for those after-school programs? You know, like the park, we talked about that, is that going to be there? What's that going to be, what other partners that we have in the community like BOA or Boys and Girls Club? Will they be near theirs to provide additional programming for after-school tools? So those are all things we should all be thinking of, I think, as we go forward on this.
It was interesting to see the residential development growth that you included. It was, it was, I was surprised at first and then I thought it was such an important component on the location of the school. So thank you for including those. And then the second part is we talk about the enrollment numbers and the new elementary school. It would be my hope that we continue to use the twenty-three to one ratio for students to teach in the classroom.
No question, the dirt's moving out there. So, you know, it's, it's exciting to see, but I will tell you, sitting at a soccer game Saturday morning, watching the earth movers. And I think we've all seen how quickly the developments happen. And so I think you've done such a good job of being proactive and now we get kind of the next round of that. And so I would imagine we'll be having a lot of conversations this year because it's really not that far off.
Yeah, I mean, I think the city is studying a sewer line from north of Twelve Street all the way to Forty-first Street that'll feed that whole block up there. That's, it'll change the dynamics out there quite a bit if we do that.
So, you know, other questions or comments, any other questions or requests?
Someone? Second?
Second, other than favorite treatments, if you have to say hi.
Hi.